I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen. Bob? Can you hear me, Bob?
For me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have any paperwork, so I don't have the...
All right, if you want me to do it.
Can you read that paper?
Sure, I think Mr. Chicasa is just getting on.
Okay.
So...
Well, wait a minute.
This was first. You know what, you want to do the other one first?
Okay.
Second. All right, so the first matter... One second.
Is it the...
It'll be Anne Glick, so... This is, notice is hereby given, the village of Suffering zoning board of appeals will conduct a remote hearing on Thursday, February 17th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. An appeal by Anne Glick of Nine Hillside, Suffering, New York, to permit construction, maintenance, and use an extended driveway at Landy Washington Avenue. The approval of such appeal requires variances from the requirements of 26615G of the general use requirements in section 26623, row 2R5, column 9 of the general bulk regulations of the zoning law of the village of Suffering. The applicant is proposing a variance to allow for off-street parking in the front yard and an area variance of the maximum development coverage of 70% from the maximum development coverage of 35%. Somebody here for the applicant? The applicant here, Anne Glick?
No, me.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm by myself, yeah.
What's your name?
Anne Glick.
Okay, can you raise your right hand?
Way to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you, God?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let us know what you want to do.
Well, when I purchased that home a few years ago, it was 2014. Tenants were parking at the front of the house. Now, when, after I redid the home, I paved, and I paved also the entrance. And I know that, you know, now I know that I'm not allowed to do that, however...
How do I get this thing out?
Keep going, Ms. Glick.
Okay, however, on my behalf, I will say that the house, the driveway, shared with 88 Washington. We have an easement. If I have to, all my tenants go to the back, it's very unsafe to get out. They have to back out into Washington, into, onto Washington, to get out of the driveway. So that's a big issue. Number two, the front of my house, I sent pictures, is covered, that part where the cars are going to park, is covered by bushes. So it's not really seen from the outside. And, and I understand that, you know, the area that is covered or built is a large area, however, looking to the front of my house, the whole right side is full of green. The house next door has no green at all. So, you know, it's every, a little here, a little there, but I, you know, I think I need that area for my tenant.
I need this side, yeah, okay.
I don't have driveway on this, on the right side, and the left side is shared with the, with the other property.
No, it's a separate driveway, if you look at it.
Well, hold on, I'm sorry, please don't talk while you're... I'm sorry, did you have anything else?
No, I think she was, the lady was trying to say something, I don't know what.
No, we have to go in order, so when it's her turn, she'll go. But did you have anything else you want to indicate?
No, the main reason, you know what, is the safety to get out. They don't have to back up, they can park, make, you know, return a little bit, and then face forward towards Washington. Exit Washington, you know.
Okay, you're done? That's it?
Yeah.
You want to open up a public hearing, if there's anybody?
You can talk.
Open the public hearing? Thank you.
Well, I really don't know, it's the first, it's my first time doing this type of meeting, so I don't, the procedure.
You're finished.
Now they opened the public hearing for, for other people if they wish to speak on it. Does anybody else wish to speak on it?
No.
Okay, good, Lisa Wilson.
Yeah, Lisa Wilson, I live on...
Raise your right hand, Lisa. Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you, God?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, we live on East Malpe, and I walk past that house very often, and I think the coverage of the blacktop in the front yard is lending toward more of an urban feel than our suburban-type neighborhood. I think that the blacktop in that, now we're lending toward like the look of living in the Bronx, where you see cars after cars after cars after cars in all of these front yards. And I think you're going to create a domino effect, that if you approve this, then all of these absentee landlords that fill these houses with tenants, and now we have empty number of cars for all of these tenants, they're all going to want to pave the front yard. And if you approve this submission, then how do you have an argument to say to the next one that comes down the line, "You can't do that, you can't do that, you can't do that." And I think that that front yard should stay green. That's the way our homes look here, and that's the way it should stay. Whether you live there, or you have tenants there, then when you rent the house, you have to say, "There's only room for one car," or "Two cars," or whatever. The argument that she put up about backing out onto the street has no validity at all. Everybody on Washington Avenue, East Malpe Avenue, East Maple, all of us, we all back out onto the street. That's, if you're going to say that that's a reason to approve it, then you're going to have to allow everybody to build a turnaround in their front yard. I think the coverage issue is unfair to the neighbors. Now you've created all of this coverage where rainwater would have percolated into her own yard, and now that water's going to run off into the neighbors' yards. How do we know that water's not going to end up in their basements, or flooding their backyards, or wherever it's going to end up? But my biggest thing is that you've, you know, there's a domino effect here, that you'll give it to one, you got to give it to another, and now it's going to run. So many of those homes on Washington Avenue, or even on our streets, are absentee landlords. And they're all going to be like, "Oh, great, now we can park all the cars we want, we'll just, we'll just pave yours."
Say something?
I'm done.
Is there anybody else, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to say something.
All right, can you raise your right hand?
Right here, right there.
Tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you, God?
Absolutely.
You do, thank you, go ahead.
My name's Randall Erickson, we live next door, we're at, I, we're at 92 Washington Ave. And I kind of, I, I like to second a lot of the things that Lisa said. I, I don't think that, you know, we don't back out on the Washington Avenue, we back into our driveway, and and so we can pull out forward, which is really the way you're supposed to be doing these things. You know, there's, there are some other issues with a lot of the houses that have, that are going in around here, where it seems that there's a lot of people moving into these houses, there's a lot of families coming into these houses. Parking is becoming quite an issue around here at this point. And yes, it is, it's certainly losing the suburban feel that we had at one time. And we've been here for over 20 years now, and it's definitely losing that feel. And as these things continue to, to move forward, and more and more stuff is getting paved up, we are, we are going to lose this small village feeling. It's rapidly going to turn into something that I don't think people around here are really looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, you want to close the public hearing?
Hold on, hold on.
Got someone else?
Person named Susan, if anybody else, just give another second with the with the Zoom, I just want to make sure we don't miss anybody. Okay, it doesn't look like anybody else would like to talk.
Okay, close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. All right, you guys want to discuss it, what do you think?
If you want, I'll read the, I'll read the law to you. It basically says, this is 26615G, and they're asking for a variance from this. Says, "Where a lot is used for a single-family or two-family dwelling, off-street parking may be permitted in the front yard only within a paved driveway. Within the front yard, no driveway shall exceed 10 feet in width. Where a driveway gives access to a garage opening, within the front of side of dwelling, the driveway width may exceed 10 feet, but shall not exceed the width of the garage opening, plus one foot on either side of the opening, or 25 feet, whichever is less. For purposes of this regulation, to emphasize any portion of the exterior wall of the dwelling opposite to and facing the front line." I know it's a little confusing, but it's basically saying you can't park in the front yard unless it's in a driveway. You know? So that's what they're asking for a variance for, from.
I'd like to ask a question of the applicant, if I may? A question or two?
Go ahead, Bruce.
I was in the building department today, and they recounted a history to me of the property, and what, and the plant showed me the plans and said, initially you wanted to put gravel in the front, where you have now put macadam, blacktop down, is that true?
Yeah.
Why the change?
Because when they came to do the blacktop, when we did it, the blacktop on the driveway, you know what, they offered to do it, and I didn't feel, I didn't know the difference between gravel and and blacktop, I will say.
So you let them do it?
Yeah, I let them do it. But I also, you know, with gravel, the water accumulates, and the snow, and, and it makes, makes the place more messy and dirty. And I, you know, someone said that the water is going to go to the other properties, no, because I am surrounded by dirt and grass and the bushes. The water's not going to go through, to, to the other driveways or at the other houses. If it rains or snows, the water will go into my own garden, I will say.
Okay, in my conversation with the building inspector today, I was told that they made it very clear to you that you could put gravel down, you could not put blacktop in the front, and you could not park cars in the front.
That I couldn't park? There was, it was always used as parking, and the inspectors know that. It was always, all the tenants previous, when I bought the house, there were previous tenants, and they were parking there. They were always parking in there. Nobody ever said you can't park in the front of the house.
That doesn't mean that it was legal.
Exactly. But they were never told that it was illegal either.
But again, I'm, I'm telling you that the building inspector, the two members of the building inspector told me today exactly that you were told that it was illegal, that you could not do it.
When I did it, yes, they told me that. Because we would put gravel on the right side, but I needed to remove a tree, and I didn't do that yet.
Okay. Um, can I ask another question?
Could I say, could I say something here?
No, not yet, no.
Okay.
Um, in our packet, in, in the documentation we got, it says that you were given notice back in November of tires being stored in the backyard. As of, as of this afternoon, there are still tires stacked up in the backyard. You have an outstanding code issue.
Oh. I haven't been there, I'm sorry. That I don't remember if they told me, really, I don't remember.
Okay.
I had tires there, and I asked someone to remove those tires, but I haven't been there.
So, just so we're clear, Bruce, you know, obviously it would behoove the applicant to have that remedied, but it doesn't preclude you from considering the application, that's all.
Understood, but it is an outstanding issue.
Okay, I'll remove the tires.
Okay.
I'm, I'm done.
Anybody else want to say anything?
Did anybody look at the runoff situation with the property as far as the drainage? The building inspector, did they ever look at the drainage the way it is now? Where all that water is going to go?
Do you know about that, Bruce?
Uh, no, I just know that the property would have been okay with the gravel in the front yard, again, from my conversation with the building department today, because gravel is a pervious structure, if you will. Water can go down, rainwater can go down, it doesn't accumulate, and it doesn't run off to adjacent properties. When you put macadam down, when you put blacktop down, water has no choice but to go to the side, whichever direction that happens to be. I didn't check the grade on, on the, on the property. I don't know whether it goes to 92 to 88, back to the house or out to the street, but it can't stay.
And again, well, and also, you know, putting that aside, I don't know that even just it being gravelled, that, that cars would be able, allowed to park there, you know? It's, the statute I read doesn't, doesn't read that way, so I would just, before, before anybody says, "Oh, you can go ahead if you do gravel," she would have to check with the building department, because that's not the way I'm reading statute.
What was the gravel before? Was there gravel there before?
Yeah.
There was gravel, Francis?
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Okay, further from my conversation with the building department, they said gravel would be allowed, but it would not be a parking area. The choice is
Right, that's, that was my point, that's right.
Or, or gravel, not, not a hard surface.
So it's And maybe the gravel would allow the turnaround, but certainly you couldn't park there.
Correct.
And do you think anybody's going to park there? I'm sure they will. You know, nobody's going to be checking on it.
How many families are living in that complex, in that property? Is it a two-family, three-family?
Two families.
Two families?
How many cars?
Six.
Six cars. That's a lot of cars.
I know there's parking on Washington Avenue, they put parking spaces going down the right side. Maybe it alleviates some use of the driveway.
Yeah, and that, that may be helpful, but again, it's, the, the question is whether or not it's, it's, she meets a criteria for the granting of a variance. You know? And whether there'll be an undesirable change in neighborhood as existing physical condition, whether there'll be a benefit cannot be achieved by some other method, whether they're substantial, whether it's substantial, whether it would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, so that's the analysis you have to do.
And, and setting precedent.
Well, every decision, arguably.
Because I don't, I don't recall any other properties in that area having parking in the front.
I haven't, I was there today, I haven't seen one intro.
All right. Anybody else want to say anything?
All right, if I may?
Hold on, hold on. Wait, you want to open a public hearing again?
Motion to open the public hearing, again?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I just, I just like to mention this because I, I think Anne brought this up about the, that tree being removed, and I've, we've had concerns about this tree for, for quite a while now. I'd really like to see that tree removed, and if that was part of what was supposed to be done for the, the big addition they put on and everything else, I'd like to get some kind of idea of when that tree's going to be removed. It's a very old tree, it's a very large tree. It loses its leaves, the first thing, loses its leaves in the fall, it's the last one to get the, the leaves in the springtime, and if anybody says it's losing bark off of it, if anybody's seen this thing, it, it doesn't look healthy, it doesn't look well, and one of these days, I don't have, nobody has a, a crystal ball here, but one of these days, that tree's going to come down. When it comes down, whatever it hits, it's going to mash it flat, and it's going to be very, very ugly, it's not going to be a pretty sight.
That's an issue you should raise with the building department if it's relevant, or you could have a private action.
Okay, okay, I understand that that's not what this is about, but that was brought up in the conversation, I just wanted to bring up my thoughts on that.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay.
Close the public hearing?
Well, does anybody else, did anybody else...
Anybody else want to say anything?
I do. Yeah, I, I think we're, we're missing one obvious point, that we have homeowners that are absentee landlords that are doing things under the assumption that we're going to try and sneak it in, and maybe we'll go back and ask for forgiveness later. And nobody's going to make me rip up the blacktop, oh, they're just going to slap me with a fine, and the whole thing's going to go away. And the rest of us, as Mr. Erickson said, we live here because our community looks the way that it does, and we're proud of our homes. And this type of overdevelopment, over-coverage, over everything by someone that doesn't actually live there is offensive to us. And I think that if you're going to approve this, you're insulting all the rest of us that do the right thing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, what do you think you want to do?
Motion to close the public hearing first?
Oh, close the public hearing, okay. Second.
I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Anybody want to make a motion then?
Motion to vote on the variance?
Motion to vote on the
Well, it'll be to, either to approve or deny, which one? I'll make a motion to deny the variance?
I'll second.
I'll third, not Barry.
Good, now take a vote, you got to take the, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
About Andrew, what's Andrew?
No, it's, Banks voted, it's, the vote is four to one to deny. Correct, Lynn, did you get that? Banks, do you just make it, since we're on the...
I didn't get who voted, I get who...
The motion was made by Carrie, seconded by Bruce.
What did that thing do?
Banks, I asked if there were any opposed to the motion, and Banks raised his hand, correct, Banks?
Correct, yes.
So that's four to one to deny.
Who voted for it?
No, nobody, it's four to one to deny, that's it.
Okay, all right, good.
All right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And now, Rob, the question that Lisa raised is a good one. What happens with the property?
That'll be up to the building department. But the, you know, the, the variance was denied, so now I suggest that Ms. Glick contact the building department to see what the next steps are, but it's in violation, so.
Okay.
All right, so contact them tomorrow, I'll be in touch with them, and you know, you're going to have to remedy it.
Okay.
Or you, and, you know, whatever your options are, but you know, that's, that's where it is right now. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Barry, the next matter, going back to number one, is Diego Chicasa, 162 Wayne Avenue. Here, leave. Dan, this is a continuation of the appeal of Diego Chicasa. Permit construction use of a garage at 162 Wayne Avenue requires a variance, an area variance from requirements of 26623, row R15, column six and seven of the general bulk regulations. The applicant's proposing an area variance, minimum side yard of six feet from the required 20 feet, and a minimum total side yard of 25 feet from the required 40 feet. So, Mr. Chicasa, are you here?
Yes, how are you, sir?
How are you? Did we lose Barry?
No, I'm here.
Oh, sorry, you're right in the middle.
Yeah. Mr. Chicasa, you want to say what you want to do, or?
Do I have to learn in?
Yeah, okay, so I have my cousin over here, so
Hold on a second, Mr. Chicasa. Can you, can you put your camera on?
Sure.
Thank you, can you just raise your right hand?
Raise your right hand. Tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you, God?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, all right, tell us what you want to do.
I have my cousin over here, so he's going to speak for me, okay? He speaks English better than me, okay, so I'm not...
What's your cousin's name?
My name is Carlos Alvarez.
Okay, well, go ahead, if you want, and you want to raise your right hands, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so go ahead, what, what, what did you want to say for him?
Okay. So, everything is according to plan. Um, but the mistake that my, my cousin did was break the whole thing down due to the fact that a lot of water would come in and would damage a lot of his property, especially the tools that he uses for his company. So, it was like, that was one of the, one of the main reasons we, he decided to do that. But he, he, he knows what he did, and he's living up to it. And he apologizes for the, for his mistake, that he's, what he's done.
I just had a quick question, the the, what happened with the garage, he went to replace, or to repair the existing one, right?
Yes, the foundation, the foundation, he wanted to make a whole new, the whole garage, he wanted to make it all brand new. But when we was, when we was getting to work, the foundation, before, we had a big issue with water coming in all the time. When it rained, when it snowed, it would melt, and it would just come all the time. So, this was an issue because it would, it would damage a lot of his property. And he, he, he lives up, he, he's apologizing for what he's done, he's really sorry.
What did he do?
He, he wasn't supposed to break down the whole foundation.
The whole garage.
The whole garage.
But it's in, it's in the same spot, right?
Yeah, everything
Is same size, in the same spot, so the only thing was different was, I make a little height, but everything is in the plan, so according to the plan, so I don't, okay, nothing is changed, nothing is changed.
Everything's the same, he just says that, like, it's the, it's the, it's the fact that he broke down the whole foundation, and they said that this wasn't in the plan. This was, this wasn't in the plan, he wasn't supposed to do that. But the fact that he did that was that due to the fact that a lot of, a lot of water would come in, damage all his property, and there would be a lot of flooding.
I understand, okay, and I'm sorry to keep talking to everybody, but I don't, can you see the email that I got?
Yes.
That's on there? Yes, I sent this to the building inspector, and, and this was his response, that they were issued a permit to add a second level to existing garage, when it was performed, and inspection was informed, it was determined the existing garage was moved, they probably do structural integrity and replace with a new structure. Uh, so it had to, so once it was removed, it had to comply, so it, it in a way, it was a pre-existing condition, and he put one up in the same spot. I confirmed with Mr. Tishner, that it was in the same spot and the same size, I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You want, anybody wanna speak? You wanna open a public hearing if there's anybody?
Your motion to open the public hearing, public portion?
Motion.
Good, second.
All the favor?
Hi.
Right, nobody here, right?
Anybody from the public wish to speak on it?
No, you wanna close?
I'm just asking to unmute in case she can't unmute, but it, it looks like she doesn't want to, so.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All the favor? Hi. Can I ask a question, Mr. Chicasa?
Yeah, go ahead, man.
What is the current height now of the garage? Of the new garage?
It's about twenty-one foot, I think. Yes, twenty-one foot.
Thank you.
Twenty-one foot.
What was the existing?
The existing thing was like fourteen or fifteen feet.
Oh, wow.
But that's what he was asking for originally, was to add the second.
Yeah, he, in the, yeah, I was just about to say that. He, he got approved to make it a little higher due to the fact that it's, 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 it's high, the, the dirt is high, so a lot of the water, he was trying to make it equal to the, to the ground level.
And they're not required, they're not, they don't need a height variance apparently, so.
Okay.
No, they don't, okay.
Yeah, right.
Uh, again, at the building department today, uh, the building inspector told me the initial plan was just to add the storage, add the second level, if you will.
What was there?
From what was there, yes. Raise, raise the room, raise and at some point, nobody quite knows how or why, Mr. Chicasa, instead of just adding the second level, took the whole old garage down. That's what triggered
Right, that, that was my mistake.
All right, you don't, don't talk, we'll, we'll, we'll tell you when you can talk, thank you.
Um, had, had the, had the second level, had the storage level just been added to the existing structure, the structure was already there, there would have been no need for the variance and just would have been the construction permit, the building permit, like anybody else. That's what triggered this whole process. And I'm only bringing this up because there was some confusion about this last month about why it all happened and what happened. Um, but also, the building department did say to me, as Mr. Chicasa said, and as Greeno said, the garage, the new garage, the current garage occupies the same space, which, which changes that there's new material, but not the layout, not the square footage, not anything like that. It's just a higher border, what is there.
That's pretty high to go up seven more feet though, right? I would think.
Well, they told me you could go up to thirty-five.
Oh, all right, okay. Oh, all right. Okay.
By the day at the building department.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Anybody else wanna say anything? No?
Rob, is there any relevance to asking what is being stored in the garage? Is it a, is a business being run out of, out of the garage? Is that is that relevant?
Uh, is it my turn to talk?
You, you can ask him.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes, we have materials, equipment and whatnot, like tools to, for plumbing. He has his own plumbing company. It's not, it's not his plumbing company, it's, it's, um, he, he, he works for a plumbing company, but it's his tools and equipment that he has there. And whatnot.
Does he keep his truck there?
Yes, uh,
I have, I, yes, I have over here one truck, uh, two trucks actually, he has my trucks, but everything is mine, so nothing like somebody else live in my house, it's my trucks.
And if, if, you know, you're only allowed to park it in certain areas and frankly, having a garage is one of the things, you know, that is encouraged for commercial vehicles, so.
I know someone told me also, I saw something about it. Okay, so I'm gonna move my truck also, so I'm looking for, uh, I'm parking for my truck now, absolutely. My house.
Uh, I'd like to ask a question, uh, furthering on from what Mr. Edwar asked. When I visited the garage, when I visited the site last month, I noticed more than just tools, I noticed, uh, water heaters and ductwork and, you know, professional equipment going on there and I, as far as I know, the codes of the village of Suffolk do not allow for the storage of commercial equipment in residential property.
That's true, yeah, that's true. Okay, I used to have a lot of stuff in my garage because bigger, I need a storage for that, so now I'm looking for a warehouse to keep all my stuff already. I take it already, so then most of the stuff, everything's out.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, so I put my car already inside the garage, so now it's clear.
Do you want, do you want me to answer why, um?
I did, I realized it when I put it
Barry, you might wanna No, 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 I'm, I'm muting you, Barry, cause we're hearing background noise. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, so, yeah, my uncle apologized, apologizes for what he's done, he's really sorry. He knows what, the mistake that he made. But it was, it, it was just the, when we started the project, it was a lot of cracks, so there was a lot of exposure for water to come in. It was, it was the, it was one of the main reasons why we decided to break the whole thing. But he, it was an honest mistake and he apologizes. But now he wants to do everything by the book. He wants, he wants to get, you know, get the, if, if you guys allow it, to get the for it to go by the code and get a, an exact permit for it and get approved.
All right, Barry, we, I muted you, so can you unmute yourself? You gotta click the button down below.
Yeah, I did.
You got it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I forget where you, you closed the public portion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, Carrie, what'd you say? Is it appropriate to, um, vote on the variance with the condition that the applicant does, uh, find a warehouse for the bigger equipment and the, a parking for the trucks? Or is that not related? It's, look, he, he's got to abide by the law. The question is, if this structure can be where it is, um, you know, if you wanna put a condition that it's, you know, not for commercial purposes in accordance with the law, you know, that is what it is, you know? That is what it is. Um, it's whether or not the structure can be there. And again, the code enforcement, it's up to them, um, you know, to enforce the code. If, uh, you know, look, I, you know, I don't know if, if, you know, somebody can put a couple of, you know, pieces of ductwork or whatever in there, you know what I mean? Is that, or, or is it um, a situation where it's happening all the time, but, you know? It is what it is. If you wanna say not for commercial purposes in accordance with the code, you can do that.
That'd be a good idea.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the variance with the understanding that it is not for commercial purposes and must stay to the laws and the codes of the village of Suffolk.
A second.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Okay, I'm on.
Hi.
Am I opposed? No, okay. So, it was approved five to zero, okay?
All right, thank you, boss.
So you have to call the building department tomorrow, all right?
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Are you or us?
You.
Okay. Thank you, boss, I really appreciate, uh, sorry for, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so I can leave the meeting?
Yes.
You can leave.
Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, you wanna close the meeting?
Uh, when do you wanna, when's the next meeting?
Fourth, seventeenth.
St. Patrick's Day.
I don't think so.
You wanna do it the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Probably a better idea.
Worked it for everybody? Absolutely.
Okay.
I can't hear you, Banks, what are you talking?
No, I will not be available on the twenty-fourth, so.
Can everybody else?
I will not be available on twenty-fourth, bud.
Oh, I, you know what? I have a, I have to pick my wife up at the airport on the twenty-fourth, I have a conflict also on the twenty-fourth. How about the twenty-second? It works for me. The twenty-second works. Of March.
Okay, that works.
Hold on, the one thing I'll say, right now, you can do remote meetings up until the sixteenth. Whether the governor extends that, I don't know. So, if you wanna say in person and then you'll switch, or what do you wanna do? If you wanna switch or you wanna do in person, it's up to you.
In person? Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah, I am, in person.
I'm in, I'm, I'm okay.
Is the twenty-second to Tuesday?
Say again?
What, what, what day?
The twenty-second is a Tuesday, yeah.
Twenty-second, is that a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we will have to end somewhere, cause court is on Tuesdays. So we won't have the courtroom.
So maybe we could, you could ask tomorrow if we can either have the community room or, or the main room there, the theater.
Yeah, let us know, Lynn.
Okay, so twenty-second at seven-thirty, right? In person. In person.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, wanna have a motion to close the, close the meeting?
Don't move.
Don't move. All right, everybody, thank you very much.